Yes.
Much. Ready to march? Good evening. Thanks for being here. Welcome to our city council meeting for Thursday, July 21st. Our opening will be provided by Councilmember Abby Hunt, and then if we'll stand and join her, she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right, so with the pioneer holiday coming up this weekend, I got to thinking about pioneers and how they've affected, you know, Kaysville and Utah and so, sorry, sorry. And so I wanted a formal definition for pioneer, so I turned to the internet and I found that the word pioneer has been used as a word to describe, well, I'll just quote it, it says, "A member of an infantry group preparing roads or terrain for the main body of the troops." I just think if you take this definition in a more civilian tone, it means that everyone at some point in their lives falls under the definition of pioneer, as we each work to prepare for those in our troop or those to come after us. I think all of us in Kaysville are pioneers in one way or another, whether you're someone whose ancestors are in the Kaysville Cemetery or a transplant to the city. We all have unique, have a unique pioneering spirit, and we each bring our individual strengths to the city. Lately, my family and I have gotten into watching bladesmithing videos on YouTube. Don't ask me how that happened. And so I've been learning about different kinds of metals, and much like how alloys or mixtures of metals are stronger in many ways than pure metals, when each of us bring our individual pioneering spirit, like the pioneers who made this state, to the city, we make a stronger, better community. Over the last few weeks, we've seen how our community can come together, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to express how thankful I am for the people of this city and the opportunity to live here with such amazing citizens. So with that, I guess we'll go ahead and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. That was a fantastic opening. We have one person signed up to speak for our call to the public. If you'll state your name, please, and you'll have three minutes, and the timer will start as soon as you come up. Thanks, Rob.
I'll try not to take too much time, but I figured I should at least stand up and say something, since it is a work item for the library, but just wanted to share, I guess I should say, Rob Danzy, on the Kaysville City Historic Preservation Committee. But yeah, just would love to hear what you guys have to say today about the library. I think obviously myself and others are here because we'd love the chance to save the library and figure out a way to use it moving into the future. Look forward to hearing how that can be done. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Rob. All right, we'll now have a presentation of an award by Nick Mills. Oh, excuse me. Oh, an annual open meetings act training by Nick Mills.
Yeah, I'm so excited. Lord, I wish I had the award. It'd be better.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Annual training on open and public meetings act is required by statutes, so you'll see me up here every year that you're on the council. Once a year, we'll do brief training. And I'll be the first to admit that this is not the most riveting topic, but it's required by statute, so we'll get through it together. If you can go to the next slide. So the one interesting thing about the Open and Public Meetings Act is that it starts with a policy, a declaration of public policy. Many statutes, in fact, almost all statutes, do not have this declaration of public policy codified as part of the statute. It's just kind of, it'll be part of the legislative history, but it's not part of the code. It's a specific issue they're trying to address, but they don't put it in the code. I think that this will be the only law statute that we talk about, well, talk about the whole time, but this is the only time we're going to look at a law, so hopefully the rest is less painful than this. But the legislature wants local government to understand that they do the work of the public, that they're here on behalf of the public to do the public, the public's work. And so, under subsection two, there's two things that the act requires. One is that public bodies should take their actions openly, and they should conduct their deliberations openly. And that doesn't mean that they have to allow the public comment on everything or allow the public to comment or dictate how they do what they do, but if the public body is going to conduct business, if they're going to take action on things that concern the public, then the public has a right to at least show up and observe what's going on, and then they can make decisions about who should represent them. Can we go to the next slide? So I wanted to take this year, I wanted to take this kind of policy and put it into action with a case called Ward v. Richfield City. This is kind of the only case that they've litigated. There's two or three cases that they've litigated, the Open and Public Meetings Act. But this is a great example of how cities can run afoul of Open and Public Meetings Act and how they can remedy those problems. So, thank you. Very good. So, Ward, Boyd Ward was, in 1981, he was the chief of police of Richfield City. Right now, I looked, I think Richfield City now has 17 officers. It's a small city. If you're not familiar, it's on I-70. It's just a little southwest of Fillmore, but it's not on I-15. So it's a small town, and for some reason, Richfield City decided they were, they were done with Boyd Ward as their police chief. Interestingly, I looked, I tried to look this up to see why I wanted the gossip or the scuttle, but why did they fire this guy? And in the court briefs, neither side mentioned why they fired this guy. So if that's not the approach I would have taken if I was a lawyer, if I was representing the city, obviously, I'd have some reason that I want to put in the briefs for why we had terminated this employee, but neither side, for whatever reason, put it in. And so it must have been pretty undisputed. What happened was, on April 2nd, 1981, the Richfield City Council held a public meeting, a city council meeting, and as part of that meeting, they had on their agenda that they were going to discuss in a closed session employee issues. And so they had an agenda, they went through that agenda, and the word got out that they were going to discuss Chief Ward. They had some, after the closed session, they had a vague reference to some, quote, "other business" that they later tried to rely on, but it was kind of vague. So that night, after they had conducted their other business, they went into closed session, and they had some members of the public there that were as small as small towns sometimes get. They were concerned about this, well, as any towns get, cities get, but they were concerned about Chief Ward. And so they asked that, at the end of the closed session, if they would let the public know that they had come out of closed session. They said they would, but what happened actually is they went into closed session, they discussed Chief Ward's employment, they came out of closed session, and under that vague item on their agenda of other business, they voted to terminate Chief Ward. So Chief Ward filed a lawsuit, or threatened to file a lawsuit, and began some litigation. And on June 5th, can we go to the next slide? On June 5th, 1981, the city council decided they would hold a special, special city council meeting. They noticed up the special city council meeting, and they held a special city council meeting three days later, June 8th. The only item on that agenda that, as I recall, is that they were going to discuss Chief Ward's employment, which sounds kind of futile because they'd already voted to terminate his employment, but they held the meeting, they voted to, they again voted, and they again voted to terminate his employment. So Chief Ward did sue the city, and the case ends up in the Utah Supreme Court. And their, the main question is, did hitting this reset button, did that fix the problem? Did that remedy the problem? Or once the city council took action, had they rung a bell that they could never unring? Can we go to the next slide? So, oh, actually, stay on that one, sorry. So the Supreme Court goes back and forth, and they eventually determined that yes. By holding the public meeting, the city council had met its obligation. Not the first one, they had clearly violated Open and Public Meetings Act at the first meeting, but at the second one, by taking that action, by retaking that action, I guess you could say, they had cured any mistake that they had. And the court has basically three takeaways that I think we can draw from this case. Can you? So first of all, the Open and Public Meetings Act, I think you can take from this case, that it's not a heavy stick that the public or the people, parties can use to beat the city up. It's kind of a procedural thing, and as long as the city complies with the procedure, the court's going to be forgiving. There's a lot of reasons for that, but one of the main reasons is that the courts try to stay as much as they can out of the policy and the political workings of cities and local government. The second takeaway is that violations can be easily cured. So if there is a, if the almost all cities, I think, occasionally run into issues with, like this, where they've made decisions, they've thought, they've discussed things, and then they realize, oh, wait, we were at a retreat or whatever, that needs to go onto a council agenda. So the way you cure this is you put it on a council agenda, you invite the public, you notice it appropriately, and then, and then you've cured any problem that you have. And then finally, I thought this one was really interesting. The court says, look, it was totally unprofessional that they didn't tell this person that asked for them, asked the council to inform them when they came out of closed session, then they didn't. They said that was totally unprofessional. But we can find nothing in the law that says that a city council has to do that. It was clearly on the agenda that they were at some point going to come out of closed session and, and discuss other business. And while terminating Chief Ward didn't, didn't work under this vague and overly broad other business item on the agenda, there was no requirement that the city council inform them of, inform these citizens that they were coming out of closed session. I thought that was very interesting because the council had told this person that they would inform him. Instead, the Supreme Court said it was up to that person to wait around, and if they were that interested, they needed to wait around, and they needed to be there when the council came out of closed session. So Open and Public Meetings Act is an important, an important statute that local government officials should know and should be aware of. I want to commend Ms. Plezier and Ms. Greenwood, who do a great job of meeting a lot of the technical requirements that the city has, of noticing, making sure that public hearings are held when they're appropriate. But that's all done by staff and in a very exemplary way. Excellent. Any questions?
Oh, yes. Councilmember Jackson.
I'm just curious, in your study of this court proceeding, did you see how much the city, cost the city to go through the process, the court process, to resolve this?
No, they, they didn't award any attorney's fees or anything in the case, which is fairly common in government litigation. It was costly, and, and the lawsuit was costly. Fortunately for us now, today, this is 1981 case law, but it's still good case law, and it's kind of a guiding star for cities and for issues on this litigation. So as long as cities take that step to cure, I don't see that there's going to be substantial litigation costs. Now, certainly, if, if cities are acting in bad faith, yeah, I could see courts not ruling the same way, but here it seemed like Richfield City had made a mistake and had made good faith efforts to cure that.
Thanks.
I just, I heard that it was because he was a BYU fan. That's why he was terminated.
I can neither confirm nor deny that. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those watching and for those participating, Nick is our parliamentarian and also our attorney for this, for the city, so thank you for that. And I appreciate the training you provide. It keeps us on our toes and doing things correctly. All right. Do we have any conflicts of interest to declare, councilmembers? No? Okay. All right, we'll move on to consent items. Would someone?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A and B.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Oaks.
Aye.
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 Okay, consent items A and B approved. Thank you. We'll now move on to our action items, and I will turn the time over to Melinda to talk about action, action item A.
All right, Mayor, members of the council. In 2021, the Planning Commission, I, I think, grew tired of seeing some conditional use permits on model homes and tract offices in new subdivisions. And so they asked staff back then to look at mending code, to change that from a conditional use to a permitted use. In between all that time, there was some staff turnover, and we're finally completing the task the Planning Commission sent staff on last summer. But generally, when these items came to the Planning Commission, they didn't include any additional conditions. The code required that temporary uses only be allowed for a year, and then it would allow a six-month extension. So the conditional use permits had to come back annually. It was cumbersome for the, the businesses and the applicants. And so we took changes, then, kudos to staff member Dan Jessup, who, who worked on this text amendment, but we took changes to the Planning Commission. It streamlines and speeds up the process for businesses, reduces the workload for staff and for the Planning Commission. And so we have before you this evening a text amendment to change that from permitted, or from conditional to permitted uses through all of the residential zones. One thing I did want to point out, we're also amending the definition of temporary uses, and with the track changes on the copy that was provided to you in your packets, it looked like there was just some wording that needed to be cleaned up. So the top part shows what the verbiage is right now, that it, again, it's just for one year, and it come back for an extension of six months under exceptional circumstances. And we're just recommending that that temporary uses be defined as a use which is temporary in nature. So this item was held, or came before the Planning Commission on June 23rd. They held a public hearing. No comments were received, and the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the text amendment to the city council. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Do we have any questions? I, I think this is a great cleanup change. When I was on Planning Commission, we'd see these come back, and the signs would still be necessary, and we'd have to go through the process again. So it makes a lot of sense to me that we've done that. Anybody have any questions? Okay, let's see if we have anyone signed up to speak. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment to speak on this, and so are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. A motion that we move to vote the text amendments on various ordinances within Title 17 to allow model homes, temporary construction buildings, temporary tract offices, and temporary development signs as permitted uses in residential zones.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments, council? Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay. Passes, thank you. We'll move on to action item B, an ordinance enabling, enacting Kaysville City Code, explosives prohibited. Melinda, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. This is another item that I inherited kind of halfway through. This is an item that initially came up with staff last fall. Our, our legal counsel, Nick Mills, worked on this in absence of having a community development director. But essentially, we were contacted by a member, an agent with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, who questioned whether or not we would allow manufacturing of explosives in, at a residence. And the internal discussion led to the belief that while our code doesn't allow it, it also doesn't specifically prohibit it. The BATF looks towards the local jurisdiction as to whether or not they would issue a license for such activity based on whatever the jurisdictions, ordinances, and laws are. So it was determined that the best approach would be to get an ordinance in place that would specifically prohibit the manufacturing of explosives within a residential zone. So this ordinance, it is applicable to residential zones. We did include in that the mixed-use zone. And essentially, it's just saying, look, we, we are not going to allow manufacturing of explosives in a residential zone, which I think is a very practical and logical conclusion to come to as far as what's acceptable uses. It does exclude four things, and one would be, you know, the storage of retail fireworks that are sold for our, our holidays, our Pioneer Day, Independence Day, and then usually New Year's Eve. It does not include small arms ammunition. It also does not include commercially manufactured black powder, as long as it's stored in quantities of less than 50 pounds. And then, based on some public comment that we received at the Planning Commission meeting in June, we were asked to also put an exclusion in with model rocket motors per NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Agency Code, Section 1122. What that does is that it essentially says if you, so rocket motors that are commercially manufactured, as long as you are storing those in quantities of less than 50 pounds, which is consistent with the other exclusion, you're essentially okay to have those. So this kind of did go through a bit of a weird process. It was heard initially by the Planning Commission in February. We had an individual come out and voice some opposition to it. The Planning Commission asked staff to kind of go back and do a little bit more research and see what other communities do. And, and then we brought this back to the Planning Commission again. So it was there before them in February and then back in June. And so at that June 23rd, Planning Commission, again, based on the one comment we received, they directed staff to work up language to include those rocket motors as an exception. We did work internally with Chief Erickson, with our building official Jim Day, myself and Nick Mills, and we feel like we constructed language that would be consistent with the most currently adopted building code, so that we wouldn't have to go back if building code changed and change our code to be reflective of different years of building code. And then they gave a recommendation of approval, 7-0, based on that. So if there's any questions, I can answer those for you.
Okay, thank you, Melinda, for that. We do have someone signed up to speak. Can I, uh-huh, Mr. McGraw? Will you please state your name in the microphone? And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tran. Councilmembers, Melinda, she's been really good on keeping me up on what's taking place. So thank you. My name's Bruce McGraw. I'm a resident of Kaysville since 1980. I've been a federal explosive license holder since 1982. Did, how many of the council members read the minutes of my testimony from the Planning Commission?
Watched it. Just watched it. Minutes. Watched it. I, I'm not supposed to talk.
Well, usually, this is just your time to present to us, and so you asked a good question, and I'm sure they'll be thinking about the answer.
Well, I just want to know how, how many read it from that standpoint, because it helps me address what I've got. And I don't oppose any of it, other than it's typical, in my opinion, government overreach, adding verbiage to a 2016 ordinance you had about no explosive materials in residential zones. To add this to it, it leaves off tons of stuff. Explosive materials is defined, defined by the ATF, all-inclusive. They got a list of over 200 items, and included in that is any items that's not on the list. So my main concern, when I first got into fireworks, I was 13 years old, living in Roy, Utah. Started messing around with, with black powder, and started having fun with it. And it involved into this, shot fireworks for Kaysville City for 15 years, and the licenses for me was just a hobby. That's all. I didn't transport, I didn't manufacture anything other than flash powder outside my house, because federal law is pretty specific. You can't manufacture unless the building's designated for explosives. So if it rained, I didn't shoot any fireworks. I didn't shoot any flash powder, and all they do is make a big flash of light and booms. Okay? Doesn't affect my license at all, because I can measure two components for flash powder. I can go someplace, mix them together, light it, and set it off. It's not a problem. I just can't do it in my house to entertain my neighbors. So when the big booms on off this year, they said, Bruce, how come, was that you? And I said, no, I can't do it anymore, from that standpoint. So the concern I have, you're going to have young kids that are having interest. Parents give them a chemistry set, and they start messing around with explosive materials in their house. If you pass this, you need to put in the newsletter, this ordinance. So mom and pop, Kaysville residents, know exactly what's going on, and that explosive materials, you probably ought to put a link to the explosive material of this by ATF with the clause that said it's all, it's not all-inclusive. So when the kid starts messing around and rattles the windows in their house, the parents can get concerned and do something about it from that standpoint. That's my main thing. I wish you wouldn't pass it, but I know that's inevitable from that standpoint, because it's already been issued and all the legal ramifications from that standpoint. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Nice to stand before you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, council questions? Do we have any questions for anyone? Councilmember Jackson?
Could we have the gentleman come back up, just to answer a few questions? Is that okay?
Sure, come on up. Would you like to?
So can you just briefly describe the nature of your work and what you do with us?
As a federal license explosive holder since 1982, this wouldn't have happened, by the way, if I still had, and I still, I will hold the license, it was through, but when I applied in January, and Officer Ingram came out to visit with me, he visited Mr. Mills at the city and got Mr. Mills all excited about fireworks and explosives and flash powder, which is termed a high explosive, and it ought to be the high explosive. That all I do as a hobbyist is flash powder. I like the boom. It's like the, it's like the old flash powder in the old days where, when people would take cameras, or when you're the Fourth of July, that thing goes up and the big flash of light, and you feel the explosion.
So can you explain, like, are you, are you doing this in your garage? How many powdered chemicals? How much are we talking? Do you store the chemicals on your property?
Well, for me, I've got the components separated. For flash powders, two components, two or three at the most. Sometimes I make smoke, and that's four components. But that's all for me. That's all just what I like to do from that standpoint, and I've always mixed it outside my house, per the ordinance. And it's always been a hobby. The only time I, when I was shooting for Kaysville City, they used my license so they could park the trailer down at Davis High, and my license, and I spent the night down there with it, covered it, from that standpoint. I've never dealt, I never bought fireworks, I've never sold any fireworks. It's all just been personal hobby. Now, granted, the license says that I can do more than that, but that's all I've ever done. I have no interest in doing any of the other stuff that the license allows me to do. And that's a concern to the city, and I understand that.
Is there a limit with your license on how much, like, powder and different chemicals you can have in your home?
It doesn't matter, as long as they're separated. The term that the ATF uses in manufacturer, which is when you combine them, that's manufactured. That has to be done, not in a, not in a building, not part of a residence, by the ATF regulation, has, it doesn't have to be done in the building. It can be done out It can be done outside. So for me, if you take a component, the most I've ever mixed at one time is 10 ounces.
Thank you.
Most of the time, it's a quarter ounce, half an ounce, that I put in a tube, put a fuse on, and set off.
Would this affect your license? If we decide to change this, would it affect your license and what you do?
Well, it depends what changes you might be thinking about. The components you can have... I can have in my house the ammonium nitrate, sulfur, and charcoal for black powder. And there's no ordinance that says I can't have those in my house. If I take and mix them together in my house, then you have a problem. And that's the concern. So for flash powder, which is two components, or smoke, color smoke, you've got three or four components. You can measure those. I can measure those in my house, no problem, and put it in a cardboard tube. They're separated, take them to where I go, mix them, and set them off. And that's within the federal ordinance. So what I've done in the past, and was in violation, as I mentioned on the Planning Commission, 2016, I didn't know about the ordinance of 2016, that you could mix them. So I'd still be setting them off, along with my classy fireworks, or common fireworks on the Fourth of July, and the 24th, and New Year's, and stuff like that, but not any time outside the window.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Helpful.
Any other questions?
Oh, Councilmember Oaks.
Yeah, so the issue is where you're mixing them. You just can't mix them at your house in a residential area. You could go somewhere that is authorized, and then bring back and still set them off on the Fourth...
If I went, for example, down to the...
Where you're allowed. Yeah, I mean, where you're allowed to mix.
Yeah, where you're allowed to mix. And it's called manufacturing. And you need to understand that term.
Got it.
Manufacture. If I manufacture down...
Doesn't matter where.
Whatever. To put it in my car, it now has to be placred with an explosive material license.
Okay.
I can't just drive it back to my house and use it there because of that. So it flows into a whole new area from that standpoint. So if I'm at a place where it's a park, that's not listed residential, and it's for like my church, and they want me to shoot some fireworks off for, I can do that, but I can mix them down there together, and then they're ready to go.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You may.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? No? Okay.
Maybe just with the...
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Maybe just with the... Explosives, how is that defined? Is that... What about making, putting together bullets?
That would be probably a neat question.
Small arms?
Yeah, you can reload your own ammunition and that kind of stuff. And I... Mr. McGraw and I disagree on this, but I think your children could also have a chemistry set, because a chemistry set's main purpose isn't to create explosives, and those kind of things. So the license that Mr. McGraw wants would not limit, according to what the ATF told me, would not limit anything that he could import. He could store at his home, you know, high explosives, dynamite, TNT, C4. Obviously, Ms. Greenwood and I are concerned about that in a residential zone. You think?
So is that ATF... Was that their primary reason, that this allows big explosives like that, that are already put together? Because that's kind of contrary to that.
Yeah. The license would allow, the person that holds the license, they could manufacture any high explosives, any explosives, according to what the ATF agent told me. And Ms. Greenwood, did you have?
Yeah, I just was going to say that the BATF has, I think, four classifications of licenses and permits. And this license that Mr. McGraw has held in the past is the highest of those licenses, which means he could, even though he's telling us he doesn't, but he could manufacture anything. He could have any of those chemicals that you would use to manufacture explosives, high explosives. The license would allow him to have that. And so that's, again, why the BATF comes to the local jurisdiction to say, "What is it that you allow?" And I think this would be allowed in the right zones, where we have buildings that are commercially constructed and have different layers of protection. They would have, you know, commercial level, you would have to store chemicals in a fire safe cabinet, or you would have sprinklers within a building. In a residential facility or residential area, you just don't have those same safeguards. And so the BATF was concerned about that. So let me be clear, and it's unfortunate, but the intent of passing this regulation then would be for the city to circle back with the BATF and say, "We do not allow this in a residential zone." And that unfortunately would mean Mr. McGraw would no longer be able to have the license that he's had in the past and have the license from the federal government to create whatever he would want. Now, he could go...
At his own home.
Find a place over in the business park, the zone for that, and do that based on the other regulations that the federal government has set up. But that is the intent, is to ensure that this is not done in a residential zone.
Okay. Thank you, Melinda. Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Appreciate your time.
Can I make one more comment?
Okay.
The license that I have does involve that, but it leaves out one important factor. I cannot manufacture in my house, per the ATF regulation. I cannot store in my house explosive materials. If I wanted to store explosive materials, I have to have a magazine, which is not able to be on my property to have, period. The license does allow point-of-use manufacturer for people like me. So if I ever do a theatrical event again, I can go to a place, I've got the components, I mix them together, put them on the stage, and they got the smoke, they got the light, they got all the stuff they need. So the license might... When it expires three years from now, I can still get another license.
Right.
Because everything that's... I comply with that license, unless ATF comes out with a statute that says there are no licenses permitted in a residential area, any place in the country, then that's the only reason I could be from the license or in violation thereof.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. All right, council, do we have any other questions? All right?
I have a question for Melinda.
Councilmember Jackson.
So right now, as we speak, if we do pass this, the commercial zones, are they fine to immediately accept this type of activity on those zones? Or would this have to go through another ordinance?
We allow manufacturing in our light industrial zone.
And that includes explosives?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I just... I'm not concerned about this individual at all, but I guess one concern is just future folks that may not be as prudent and whatnot, but it's kind of tough, though.
Understood. That makes sense. Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Can I make just a comment? So I... You know, this came up like back in February. I just have to say, I appreciate the due diligence, in my opinion, that has been done by the staff and the Planning Commission. I've read through since then, you know, all the minutes and what's gone on, and I think people have done a good job of, hey, you know, let's not go over... Let's understand this before we just march forward. And so I just want to make that comment. I don't think this is... This has obviously not been done in haste. I agree that, you know, this is an inconvenience to Mr. McGrath, but I understand the residential and have to agree with that, you know. Anyways, enough said.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Blackham?
Sure. I'll make a motion, ordinance enacted, Caysville City Code 1775A, explosives prohibited in residential zone districts.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments, council? No? Okay, ready for a vote, then? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Did you vote?
Oh, aye.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Motion passes. Appreciate your time, Mr. McGraw. All right, we'll now move to action item C, Main Street Revitalization Plan Adoption. Melinda?
Thank you, mayor. We briefly discussed this plan in a work session at the last council meeting, and it was determined that council would like to bring it back to the agenda for action. This is, once again, I look forward to the time where this is a project I've started from the very beginning and to completion, but this has been an ongoing process for, I think, well over a year. And the city has partnered with UDOT to take a look at our Main Street corridor through here, where our business district is, to see what improvements could be made to increase business friendliness, pedestrian-friendly. And so they've gone through this process of determining some enhancements that could be made. This is a rendering of what Main Street could possibly look like. I believe that timing on this is meant to... If we are going to want to try and put some of these enhancements in place, UDOT has a project scheduled to do a mill and overlay of Main Street, and the best time to incorporate a project such as this would be, you know, to have that construction timing done all at once versus coming back. So just real quickly, this is kind of the nuts and bolts of the plan. This is a bird's eye view from, you know, on up to about First North there, and then down past Center Street. This is a zoomed-in version of that that just kind of shows... These are the key points of right here through our main corridor, the elements that we are looking to incorporate with moving the mid-block crossing, or the pedestrian crossing here at Center Street to a mid-block, using the parking lot here as some additional public parking, having some traffic calming elements that would be included, and then trying to increase some of the parking up on First North and then Center Street. There is also a kind of just an engineering-level budgetary bid of all of those improvements that's included on this. I think it's 2.3, 2.4 million in 2025 values. Because this is a street that is owned by UDOT, and it's a major transportation corridor, we also have transit with the bus routes that come through here, we would be able to find some funding sources outside of the city pockets to help pay for these improvements if they were able to be approved and then put in. So with that very brief presentation, I will let the council discuss.
Thanks. And I just wanted to, for clarification purposes, for everyone that might be listening or is here in person, this Main Street adoption plan, the action that we would take would be to accept a Main Street plan. It doesn't mean that this will be the absolute final Main Street plan. It just allows us then to have something to start having actual discussions and trying to find some funding sources for the plan. The plan does not include anything as far as the library building goes. The library is not included in this plan, so just so everybody knows. Mostly, it's just to reconstruct the road a little bit, and we're trying to get UDOT on board. We've had a lot of engagement with them. We've done a lot of public meetings with them, to try to say, "Okay, this is kind of what we'd like Main Street to look like. We want to open it up to provide for, you know, some other parking options and just make it more of a walkable area. We want to put some traffic calming features in there so that we can encourage businesses and people to spend more time on Main Street." So just wanted to explain that. In order to start looking for funding resources, to go to the government, to go to the county, to go to UDOT, we have to have a plan in place that we have then to be able to use and kind of refer to. So that's the action that we could potentially take tonight, to install that plan or to approve that plan, so that we can move forward with it. Council, do we have any... Well, let me see if anyone's signed up to speak to this. We don't have anyone signed up for a public comment, so council, we have looked at this a couple of times. Do you have any questions for anyone? Nope? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Hunt.
Sorry, just to clarify, so this is not permanent once we do this. This is just to get the funding road going?
Right. We still will have meetings with the stakeholders on Main Street and continue to engage with the business owners and the businesses there. They've given us some great suggestions, and we're looking at all options and so.
Councilmember Oaks.
Yeah, just one comment. You know, and I may have said this when we last talked, but I just think of what downtown Provo looked like, you know, a number of years ago, and they put into place something similar to that, and something similar to what we're talking about here, much longer, but it's really revitalized downtown Provo, you know, as you're going there. So I think this is a great idea to get this started and talk and figure out what we're really going to do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yes, Councilmember Blackham?
And I think the mayor stated it very clearly in that, but I just want to reiterate, you know, because I did go to a little seminar earlier in the year that was given by the Utah Leagues of Cities and Towns, and there is a new program that UDOT does, and it's called Main Streets of Utah. And in order for us to even apply for the funding, we have to do this first step. And that's why I'm glad she made it very clear that this is not really cast in stone, but there's been a lot of work done into it, and we've included the businesses, and they don't all agree with everything here, but we're listening to them. But if we don't get this first part done, then we never get past, number one, to get to number two. And you have to get to number two before you can get funding from the state. So... And she's clearly stated that.
Well, and thank you for both, for the clarification for both of you. Whenever we adopt something, we want to make sure people know what we're doing, so...
Yeah, because we're not spending $2.4 million. That's not... But that's just a rough engineer's estimate. We're not spending it. But it's at least a target that we can go after with UDOT to try to get some of that funding that they're setting aside for Main Streets of Utah.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. All right. That being said, no other questions? Okay. Ready for a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion. Do we approve Main Street Revitalization Plan Adoption?
And I second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments, council? No?
I have a comment that...
Yes, councilmember.
I'm really excited to get moving on this and to get funding and to start planning. And I would just like to ask everyone in the community, we want your input. We want to make this right. We want to have a downtown that people come to and shop and preserve the culture we have here, so looking forward to this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Danzy. That's a great suggestion. Okay. Okay, we'll start with a vote. Councilmember Hunt?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, council. We have approved that, action item number C. Okay, now we will turn the time over for the work item, which is why I'm sure you're all here. So we're excited to be able to talk about the library building. Cole, turn the time over to you. Okay.
He's going to talk about the whole report.
Oh, quick question first. Our monitors are not working. Is Ryan still here? Do we have ITs still here? Will someone grab them? Thanks, Anne Marie. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to give the council a brief, just a brief backstory, because I know there's three councilmembers that weren't here last fall, just to know, so they understand where we are today. So in September of last year, we came before the council for work session on what are the next steps we needed to be taking with the library building. And the direction we got from staff at that time was, let's engage with a third-party consultant to do some engineering, a feasibility assessment study. So then in November of last year, we engaged with FFKR to do that feasibility assessment, or an assessment, basically, assessment report of the building, the structure, and all that stuff. And so it's been, what, six, eight, almost eight months, working through this with FFKR. They presented to a group with a historic preservation committee, city staff, and some people from the museum committee back in June, and we felt that the next step was for FFKR to present this report to the council. And then I'll come back up at the end, or if there's any questions, kind of on maybe some next steps, directions. that we go from here. But I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thank you.
Great, and I can't believe we had zero technical difficulties here with this, so.
Oh, okay. You guys okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, go ahead. We'll just.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and present this to you. It's been a long, you know, a long time coming, I think. I remember being here in December. It was eight months ago because I was measuring the building in the snow and, you know, my paper was soaking wet, so. But this is what we do because we, you know, I love old buildings, and I've done this for my entire career as an architect here in, here in the state of Utah. As I was listening to this discussion just prior about Main Street revitalization, you know, it, there are so many crossovers and so many, you know, connections with our Main Street buildings. You have to have a great street to, you know, bring people to that street, to engage the community. There has to be a great street, but there also has to be a great contingent of buildings that front onto that street and make it a Main Street. It wouldn't be a Main Street without the street. It wouldn't be a Main Street without the buildings. And, you know, it wouldn't be a Main Street without the people that come to this place. This is a place for K'sville, and I apologize if I come off as sort of standing on a soapbox.
Yeah, just if you speak more into the mic sometime.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, they can't hear, they can't hear you very.
Thank you.
Is this better if I do that?
That is better.
Okay. What I'm, soapbox, yes. Like I say, so I was the state historic architect for three years before I came back to FFKR a year ago, and I went up and down the state, and we sort of touted the Main Street program. It was just becoming a thing. It was a concept at that time. And I worked with, pretty closely with Price City and Brigham City, and we revitalized some buildings on those Main Streets. And, you know, these are, these are small projects. They seem a bit insignificant, but I think every community has its pantheon. If you don't know what the pantheon is, it's the, you know, the Roman temple to all the gods that's in Rome, Italy. And it's one of the most incredible buildings that I've seen. If you haven't been there, I suggest you go. It's just a short trip to Rome. But it really is something that has inspired me as I go into these communities and I talk about historic buildings. I think each community does have its pantheon. I think the K'sville, you know, what was once the K'sville Municipal Building, it was the Health Center, it was City Hall, this is the pantheon of K'sville. It's not a very grand building. It's pretty, pretty low-key, pretty modest in its, in its presence here on Main Street. But it has some great qualities to it. It fronts onto Main Street. It has, you know, nice, nice windows that front onto Main Street. It's very approachable. It's scaled to the pedestrian. It's scaled to the, to the size of the city, so. And a lot of thought and, you know, craft went into this building. When I talk about historic buildings, I like to talk about a term called embodied culture. And, you know, this is something that buildings accrue over time. There's, there's something that you can't really give to a new building. It has to stand in its place for years and years. It has to, you know, contain history. It has to contain tragedy. It has to contain, you know, triumph. It's, it's all those things that bring an embodied culture to historic buildings, and this is, this is no different. So as we embarked on this report, you know, one of the questions I asked is what makes K'sville a place? What, what gives it its special character, its unique character? And it really is the Main Street, you know, the section of K'sville that really kind of defines what this place is. I mean, we have a lot of historic buildings in K'sville, you know, some notable Victorian, stately Victorian buildings, you know, something that's more arts and crafts like the Lacan Stewart House. K'sville has a character to it. It has a history to it, and, you know, this, this building is part of the history, just like all the buildings are. But what our goal was with this project was to evaluate this building, look at it as, as a, you know, a building that it is. We didn't have any preconceived outcomes about this. But we wanted to assess it, evaluate it, and provide recommendations for how one would renovate and make it useful again for the future if that's what you decide to do. So that's, that was the goal of this report, to give you the information, to provide you the information, you know, the cost analysis, you know, the effort it would take to rehabilitate and renovate this building for a future use. So that's, that's the bulk of the report. I'm not going to go through and bore you with a lot of the details in this report, but I do want to point out a few things. How many of you have looked at the report or read it?
I'm pretty sure we all have.
Okay, you all have done that. That's great. This is just the existing floor plan, and it's, you know, it's, it's seen a lot of change over the years. The floor plan has changed quite a bit from its original layout. We don't know exactly what that layout looked like, but we have some, some ideas just based on newspaper articles and uses that were in the building. This is a potential, and I want to stress that, potential floor plan for what, you know, a new rehabilitated building might look like. And one of the reasons we're dividing the space like that is because we, we think that that central space was the original City Hall. It was, even though it was a modest building, it was still a pretty grand space, you know, where the city would gather and converse and legislate. The, the section, you know, it's got basically two smaller wings to the north and south, and one of those was the Health Department, one housed the city offices, so. But this just gives us a, kind of a usable, functional way to divide up the building and use the building in the future. Part of the reason we're showing, let me see if I can, oh, I can. That's great. Part of the reason we're showing this new wall here, not only because that was perhaps, you know, the way it was originally laid out, but because this is also a structural enhancement for the building, so it's helping to resist lateral movement in the building.
Yeah.
There are some structural issues, as you all know. I think a lot of us have seen, you know, the existing condition of the wall. It's, it's had a lot of water damage and that, that wall assembly has been exposed. There's, you know, rusted-out, you know, chicken wire lath. There's an old 1940s-era proprietary air barrier that they, that they installed originally with the building, and that's sort of deteriorated away in that section. In other sections, that system looks like it was, you know, installed yesterday because there is no water damage in all of the building. It's, it's a pretty select area where we've got water damage that has, you know, caused that deterioration and damage. One thing we're looking at, though, as we look at this building, is taking the load off of the exterior stone veneer. Part of the load bears onto that stone veneer. Part of the load bears onto what is an interior stud frame wall. And so what I'm showing on the screen here are basically two sections of the wall. One is existing on the left, and one is what's proposed to, to make that upgrade in the future. And it does require some pretty intense, you know, impact on the building. It requires us to open up the floors and really kind of get into the foundation and upgrade that foundation. The problem with the current condition is if you look on the, I didn't add diagrams to this left one, so I apologize, but the floor joist is, it comes and sits on that wood plate on the foundation wall. It doesn't quite, doesn't quite line up with the stud wall on top of the floor. And so that's really the big issue that we want to, yes, thank you. That's the condition that we want to fix. So the suggested solution is to essentially apply a ledger beam to the inside of the foundation wall, which will hold that floor system up, and then you attach that ledger beam to the foundation wall with an epoxy anchor. And that would happen all the way around the building. But that essentially would stabilize that floor system. And then on top of the floor, we lay down a plywood sheathing that's a diaphragm, and it helps, helps to stabilize that building. You know, we get earthquakes. We just had one a few years ago, a couple of years ago. I worked in the Rio Grande and Salt Lake at the time, and the building was, had rocked so much that we could not occupy that building after the earthquake. So we were, we were stuck at home. We were stuck at home anyway with COVID, but, you know, that was just another complication that, that we had to face in that, in that very difficult year. The other area that we want to upgrade or that we're suggesting you upgrade if, if this building is reused and rehabilitated is the connection of the roof to the wall, the top of the wall. And again, what we're trying to do is just take that load off of the stone and into the frame wall, into the foundation, so that we've got a continuous load path down to the footings. And so this is just a detail of how that would work. Really what we're doing in this detail is just mechanically fastening the roof structure to the stud wall, the interior stud wall. Where we have stone veneer over entries, over key areas of the building, we would actually anchor that stone wall and the parapet cap into the, into the structure, so that if we did have an earthquake, none of that would come off the building. The whole point of doing a seismic upgrade is just to keep the building safe enough for long enough so that people can get out of the building. It doesn't mean that the building's going to withstand the earthquake. It just means that it's going to provide a safe exit for people to get out. And that's really what the goal is in both existing building seismic upgrades and new building seismic design, so. Do you have any questions? I want to make sure that what I'm talking about is.
I have a few questions, just quick. So what you're saying is if we have, like, a large earthquake, that stone essentially, even though you're taking the load off in many parts of it, it's still not going to totally be earthquake-safe. Is that kind of what you're saying? Like, in some respect, it'll be safer for people to get out, but at the end of the day, it's still, it could come down?
As with most buildings, yeah. It likely could come down. Some, it's going to be attached better. But yeah, it could come down, but it's not going to come down in, in areas where people are going to be. So if it does come down, it would sort of peel off the walls or crumble in place. But it wouldn't, you know, injure anyone in that event.
Did you first see, oh, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say with most building design, unless it's a hospital, a police station, you know, a necessary facility, most buildings aren't built to withstand, you know, a big earthquake. They're really just built to withstand enough so that people can get out, and then once, once that event happens, the building's typically demolished after that, so.
That's helpful to know. And then one last point. So in securing the roof or the stone, does that require at all removing part of the roof and putting it back, or removing stone and putting it back?
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't require removing stone, but it does require us to take off the existing roofing, which is just the asphalt shingles. Right now, it's got what we call a skip sheathing, which is just basically a one-by-six that's, you know, nailed to the roof structure. We would overlay that with a new plywood sheathing, a new structural plywood sheathing, so. Put on a new roof. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't require a lot of dismantling of the building, but it would require us to open up the roof. This next slide, I wanted to point out a couple of things. This is where it, you know, this is really where the rubber meets the road when we talk about cost. No, I think I'm good because I, I thought ahead and I already highlighted what I wanted to talk about, so. And in this slide, what we're, what we're looking at is sort of an all-in cost, okay? This is, you know, you do all these things, you're going to have a usable building day one after, after the renovation or the construction is complete. So I wanted to just point out a couple of things with this cost. And keep in mind, you know, you, you can cater this building renovation to whatever you have budget for, whatever you have desire to do. You know, this is, this is again just sort of the all-in cost. If you were, if you had the money to do it and, you know, the desire to do it, this is what it would cost today, not in the future. So that's an important point as well. So what this slide is showing is just basically the, the hard construction cost to do this project. And this is in line with, you know, current, current trends for new construction. It's probably a little bit low, probably a little lower than new construction would cost. What this number is, is it's not showing you what the general contractor would add to that. So this slide, I've just moved the highlighter down, and so once you add the general contractor, you know, general conditions, overhead and profit, bonding, things like that, it's coming in at about 300 bucks a square foot. And that's, that's pretty much in line with new construction. There are some added costs that we've included in this cost proposal. We don't know if these costs would be required. But we, with historic buildings, and especially at this stage where it's a very, you know, high-level schematic design, we add in a contingency. And this is just sort of a buffer to say, look, if we find something that we didn't expect, we've got a contingency to cover that. As an owner, if the contingency is not used, that comes back to you at the end of the day. So this is sort of like money that's just there for, you know, for an unexpected condition. And, and again, what I, you know, the, these costs are in line with cost for new construction. One thing I want to point out is, you know, when we talk about historic buildings, especially in Utah, you know, we talk about the cost to do a seismic upgrade. And that's what we're showing here in this building. This, this all-in cost includes the seismic upgrade. That's a portion of the cost. In, in a new building, we don't always talk about a seismic upgrade. It's sort of embedded in the cost already, right? We're, we're doing seismic design because it's required by code. So there's a cost to do seismic design even in new buildings, and I just want to underscore that, you know, some of those costs seem like an extra added cost on a, on an existing building, but really it's, it's really an apples-to-apples discussion when you're talking about rehabilitation versus new construction, so. That's, that's what I prepared. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take those out.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I seem to ask a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, it's great.
So you mentioned Brigham City, and I know they've received some federal grants and grants to the state, like Department of Ag had a grant, and I was at a grand opening for one of the buildings, historic buildings that they refurbished. It may have been one that.
Was it the Idle Isle Cafe?
Actually, we have a staffer that just used to own that, so. Yeah, I think that probably is. I'm just curious, from your perspective, is there money? I know this has been kind of a program, a pilot program. Is it still ongoing right now, the revitalization of Main Streets? And my, okay, so if it is, my second point is, you know, Brigham City got in it. When I hear Department of Ag, I think more rural. And so I'm curious if K'sville here, if we would qualify for some of those grants.
As I understand it, K'sville's a tier-one, they're already a tier-one Main Street community, so they're already in the state's Main Street program. I don't know, you know, I left the state kind of when it was just getting off the ground, but as I understand it, that you're a tier-one community, so you're in the Main Street program.
Yeah, that slipped my mind, so thanks for reminding me. Okay, that's helpful, thanks.
So that's, that just opens the door to future funding, and, you know, the Main Street community or the Main Street program doesn't just look at historic rehabilitation. They look at, you know, marketing and, you know, revitalization, like on, on the actual streets and, you know, beautifying the, the streets and the landscape, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Adams.
This is going to be more of like a personal question, just because I can tell that you are passionate about buildings and one of the common complaints that people bring up when we talk about saving, saving or preserving this building is, oh, it's not very old. You touched a little bit on your thoughts about how, you know, it, it's the pantheon. I guess, could you elaborate a little bit more on your response to maybe someone who said, oh, it's not very old? Or the old, maybe your rebuttal for tear it down?
Yeah. Well, it's not very old, and I, I joke with my friends because I just became historic myself. You know, buildings in, in the United States can become historic when they reach the age of 50. So it's, it's a very low threshold. You know, in Europe, we talk about buildings that they're.
So my ancient?
Yeah, I don't want to say it out loud. You know, in Europe, there are buildings that are, you know, 1,000 years old, 500 years old. These buildings have been around for a long, long time. But that's how we get to these types of buildings, right? We get to the old, old buildings because we keep the, you know, not-so-old buildings around, so. You know, every building's got a story to tell. This one's got a particularly interesting story to tell. It's, you know, part of the WPA movement in the 1940s. You know, construction was halted during World War II because of, you know, the need to sort of farm resources out to other needs and, and efforts. It was, you know, restarted after. It was, you know, restarted after Pearl Harbor, restarted in nineteen forty-three and completed in, I think, nineteen forty-four. But it's, it's been a part of the community. The community's been invested in, in the building a long time. And as I, you know, walk Caseville's Main Street, I'm always struck by the fact that Caseville has duplicated, replicated this building in every other building that they built. You know, you can see it in this building, this split face native stone that's, that's facing all these important buildings in Caseville. It's coming from this, from this building, you know? There's, there's a status that this building has in the community that, that's being replicated throughout, so. So that's why I say, yeah, it's, it's not super old, but it's getting there. And the only way to get it there is to, is to, you know, renovate it and keep it, so.
All right, any other just questions for...
Just...
Go ahead, Mike.
So, um, recently, we had a project in the city that was estimated it, from the engineer, at nine hundred thousand. We put one point two million in there for contingency. And when it came back to bid, it was one point seven million. And so I guess I, what I'm really interested in is what the real cost would be. And I want to ask you, um, how much do you think it would cost to get the documents to the point where you could send it out to big commercial contractors? Because you're basically saying in your report that the plumbing's at the end of life, the mechanical's at the end of life, the electrical's at the end of life. We got lateral problems, we got undulation in the floor, we got water in, you know? So there's obviously gotta be detailed drawings that a contractor can bid against to actually give you the cost. What do you think, I mean, in most cases, it's usually six percent of the cost of the estimated cost of the project. So you're looking about, you know, if it's two million dollars, we're looking a hundred and twenty thousand for, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars probably for drawings, just to get to the point. And, and that's what I'm more concerned with. I want to know what you think, if the next step was to get the actual costs, how much is it gonna cost us to get the drawings to that point?
Yeah, the, the drawings are the easy part.
Okay.
Typically, that's about six percent. You're right, it's about six percent. Depends on the complexity of the project, you know? But that includes the architecture, the engineers, the structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, civil. And that, that's typically, you know, the, the engineering needs that you're gonna, you're gonna have on a project like this. So six percent's a pretty good estimate on what that would cost. It may go up to seven percent if it's, you know, very complex. But this is a fairly simple building.
So roughly, we would probably look in somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to get the drawings to the point where you could actually bid this and give us an actual cost?
Is that one twenty, sorry, Mike, are you finished?
Yeah.
Is that one twenty factored into the two? No, it would be into the two point one that you've done here?
No, so that's...
That's totally separate?
Yeah, so if you look on the, on the sheet, it says soft costs not included in the construction cost estimate. So, um, you know, some of these things are not costs that you're going to see. A commissioning agent is only something that you would pay for if it was, you know, a LEED certified building. So they would come in and commission the building after it's done. So these are just sort of all of the soft costs that potentially could be part of that cost of construction. But if you want, I'm just gonna hurry.
Do you mind if we're trying to speak to the cost that got us to this point currently? So currently, this had to cost money as well, right? And we applied with the city to get a grant to pay for this particular development as well. So maybe we're speaking and saying, hey, what grants are out there? Fong and her team and others have gone to great lengths to say, hey, we're gonna search for those grants, we're gonna find a way to pay for these things. And they've gotten the grant to pay for, you know, thirty thousand dollars for this or twenty-five thousand, whatever it was.
Yeah, okay, so there's potential to maybe find some programs that could assist in that? Is that what you're suggesting?
I would, I would imagine so.
Mayor? I'm not getting with some of the records.
Oh, oh, that's right, okay, all right. I, we, I can restate it for you, how about that? Okay. So the question was, from the audience, could we maybe find some grant money to pay for some of these soft costs to get engineering drawings and architectural drawings in order to bid the project out to a contractor?
Yeah.
And so there is a potential to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a number of grants out there. We, you know, we, we talk about the state Historic Preservation Office. They have a, a federal grant program that they give out to CLGs, Certified Local Government. It's not a lot of money, but it, you know, it can help add to the, you know, to the total.
To the, to the total, okay. Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions for...
Mayor?
Yes.
May I?
Questions?
Yes.
Yeah, a question.
Um, I'm just wondering, with, with like the, the state the building's in, like, not including inflation, since I don't think any of us can give an estimate to that, just with the amount of time, do you see it becoming more costly to repair?
Yes, with inflation, yes. And, you know, we've got, we've got some, uh, language in here that, that talks about that. Typically, we see about a five percent per year inflation on construction costs. What we've included in this cost estimate is an eight point five percent cost of inflation. So that's something that would be added each year as you move down the road. And that's, you know, that's just sort of a, a thumb in the, a thumb in the air at this point, so.
And aside from inflation, though, like, with the, like, is it sustaining more damage in the state that it's in, I guess?
Uh, it's in a fairly stable state, I think. You know, I've, I've been looking at this building now for about four years, I think. And it looks about the same as, as it did four years ago. It seems like the water problems have been solved and there's no more, you know, current water problems coming into the building, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. So council, this is a work, a work item. So I think that the first question that I would just have for council is, how are you feeling about this project? I will tell you, I, I'll start out by sharing how I feel, I guess. I would love for this building to be repurposed. In my mind, it would be fantastic if we could, if we could repurpose this building. Half of it could be a restaurant, or some of it could be a restaurant. The other part could be a museum. So when people are waiting for food, they can go over to the museum and they can, you know, and, and slash art gallery. So I think it would be fantastic if we could repurpose it, if we could save the building. That being said, I, I would also like us to maybe put this out for bid, to see if there's interest by private companies to come in and, and open a restaurant. You know, help with the repairs, help pay for some of those costs. Maybe the city could pitch in and maybe we could give them some incentives in terms of, I don't know, not charging them a lease or something like that, some creative alternatives. I would love for, I would love for us to put this out to bid so that we have an opportunity to see what's available and the interest out there. Because, you know, I keep hearing that there is interest, but we need to know if there really. Is there really someone that would be willing to step up? If there's not someone willing to step up, then we, we need to look at a second plan. So that's kind of what I would love to see. In, in addition to that, I would love for the Museum Committee, Historic Preservation Committee, to also be looking for grants, because we're gonna have to pay for this somehow. As most of you know, hopefully, because I think that most of you pay attention, we recently, as the city council, voted not to have truth in taxation this year. We are very aware of costs and inflation and money and being responsible with our money. And so obviously, a price tag is, is, you know, a big deal to us. This is a lot of money. We know it'll cost more than two million dollars, just because it will. The actual construction costs will be higher. That being said, I would love to know how you all feel, if you'd be willing to share your thoughts in terms of going down a road like that.
Sure. I'll, I'll start. You know, I, as I, I read through the report over the last few days. And you read through and, um, problem, 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 needs to be fixed. You know, I got a body that way, too. And I wish I could get the two million dollars to fix it, but, um, but, but there's nothing in there that said, tear me down. You know, I, as I, as I read through, it, it said, this building has good bones and can be fixed. You know, it goes back to my whole, you know, the, I, I lived here in Leighton when I was a young captain in the Air Force, and I loved driving through Caseville, always wanted to live here. And I lived here for thirteen years now, so when we moved back. And that building, you know, and I still call it the old library because that's what it was when I moved here, that's iconic Caseville. And that's, when I think of Caseville, that's what comes to my mind. And, and I think it's worth, how do, what's the, what's the plan? And I think that's my biggest frustration, because it's been left there for the last four or five years. And it's sort of, um, we've lost four or five years. We could have been done with this. It could have been repurposed. And, and, and I don't care what it's for. You know, I mean, I, I have ideas, but no one has ever accused me of having a left brain. So I have zero creativity on thoughts on that side. Um, it's, I'm very much more pragmatic. Uh, I want to see what can, if I repurpose that, do I use it for the city? What can I generate money for, for the city? Where can I get some revenue? I'd, I'd love an idea of a nice restaurant, but whatever it is, uh, what's our plan? And, and I think that's what we've been lacking on what's our plan, because a lot of the focus has been on, how do we get rid of it? And I think, I'd like to see what's our plan for moving forward and repurposing it. That's, that's my thoughts. And, and the money's a lot, but I think if we tear it down and we do anything else, it's gonna cost more than that. And so, um, and I have no idea what that is, but it's gonna cost more. My, anyways, enough said.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, well, I just agree so much with Councilmember Oaks. I mean, I think that you tear it down and you, you put in some kind of type of center or whatever. We've seen how expensive parks are. And so I think, uh, you know, I was driving down in Salt Lake and I saw all the rafters around the Salt Lake Temple. And as a kid, I remember thinking like, if there was an earthquake, I would want to be in the temple, because of course, the house of the Lord wouldn't fall down, right? So, and yet you see like the efforts that they're going through to preserve that building. I agree that the only way buildings get older is if we keep them around. And there's sort of a pattern in our country to tear old buildings down. And newer isn't always greater. So I, I just, I think that we've got to move in the right direction. However, I do hate the idea of, of spinning around in circles. You know, I've talked to the Museum Committee, I think, a lot about this, that we kind of gather and we all talk about the old library and we talk about it and we talk about it, but then there's never like an action plan. And so I think that from my standpoint, there needs to be an action plan. I know that one of the primary complaints from the committees that would like to save the library or see it used as a museum or something is that they can't go out and raise money until the city has made a commitment that they're gonna try and keep it. And the city is saying, we want you to go out and try and raise money if we're gonna decide to keep it. And so it's like the stalemate right now between the two parties of saying like, you, you show that you can raise money and the city's, you know, anyway. I don't know how we get past that entirely until one of us makes a commitment or we make a contract with each other that we say, if, if you can raise this amount of money, we're gonna pitch in this amount. Or if, if, if we will keep, you know, we plan to keep it, go out and raise X amount of dollars. And I don't know if that's the right approach to take. But we've got it, we do have to have an action plan. I think that's what Councilmember Oaks was saying. And I appreciate what you said about, I think, up until now, it's been, convinced us not to tear it down. Whereas right now, we could say, let's, let's try and figure out a way to save it, right? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, I, yes. And, um, and so going forward, I, and I don't, I'm not convinced it should be put upon the Museum Committee or their Historical Preservation. I, I think we need their help. But I think it's upon us as a city to say, here's our vision. Here's our vision for this building. And whatever it's for, you know, I think part of it needs to be, you know, set aside to be able to showcase the history of Caseville in this area, you know? And whether we call it a museum or part of it, or we have that as a incorporated, again, gotta remember, no left brain, no creativity. But if, whether it's incorporated in what we do there, I think we as a city need to make that decision, say, here's the direction we're going, here's what we envision for this facility, residents, historical preservation, how can you help us? And then we elicit their help, but we're helping them along the way with, with guidance on what we can do. That, that's my thought.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hunt? Oh, oh.
Just, if you'll give me time to make a comment after Councilmember Hunt, just from a staffer.
Sure.
Um, I, I think I kind of want to echo just what Councilmember Oaks and Councilmember Adams have said. I, you know, I drive down Main Street, I think we all do occasionally. And I just, I'm not sure Main Street would be Main Street without the old library. And, um, I think, you know, we live in a time when it's easy to forget our past or our identity and, and move forward. And I think that building's an essential part of, of Caseville's identity. But with that being said, I agree, we need, we need a, a plan moving forward so that we can, so we can get it done. If I had something else I was gonna say, but I guess that'll be, that'll be it for now.
Okay, well, then we can, we can, we can keep talking.
What, Cole talk?
All right, Cole, go ahead.
Sorry if I interrupted, interrupted your train of thought, that wasn't my intent. But I think from a staff perspective, that's what, exactly what we're looking for as well, is a,
Yes, clear direction.
Is a direction to go.
Right.
Because it has been in this state of quandary with what do we do? You know, there's always been three options in our minds for the building, you know? One is to restore it. A city take that upon, restore it, use it how they want. Second one would be, of course, to demolish it, tear it down, start over, do something different. Then the third one, I think that it kind of goes along with what Mayor Tran is echoing, is what else is out there that we could pursue? And, and that's kind of the recommendation that we would put forth, would be to, to go out with an RFP, request for proposal, throw it out to the community, the business community, to see what interest there is out there, to pursue some of these, um, maybe economic development with a, you know, private sector, public-private partnership, would be to go with an RFP to get us to that next step, assuming there's some interest there. Then it would lead us to Councilmember Blackham's next phase, which is,
Right.
Okay, we've got to pay for engineering, uh, construction documents.
Well...
We can actually go out to bid, so.
This is in line exactly with what I talked to Councilmember Adams about after the last meeting we had. A few months ago, I said, to me, right now, money's the big deal for the city, because the city, you know, obviously, we were a million dollars short on our budget this year. We had to use rainy day funds. We see inflation coming up. We, we've heard needs from the city. And I looked at the building and I said, the one thing that we probably have enough of right now is office space. We, because when we remodeled this, we tried to do it with the intent that we would have enough area to grow into. And I said, let's get an RFP out there. There has got to be some businesses out there that are looking for five thousand square feet of office space, that they cannot afford a new building, but maybe there's some way that we can front the bond or front the money, they make the payments. And literally after ten or fifteen years, if it works out, that's why an RFP is so important, and that would be step number one. If we did get the interest in it and say, okay, they can make the payment, because there are businesses out there that can make a payment, but they can't afford to build a building. If we had somebody to do that, and I'm with Mayor Tran, it's, it's fine to say that could work, but I want somebody that says they will do it, they will commit to it. Then we can say, okay, next step is get a set of drawings to get a cost. You know, and, and when I looked at it, it was around twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five dollars a square foot people pay a year. And, you know, it, it was close to being able to pay a two million dollar bond. I don't know if it can pay a three million dollar bond payments on it. But until we actually get somebody committed, if that's the route we want to go...
So, so at the end of the day, that's what staff, what we're looking for.
Right, you need direction from us.
Of course, we want to look with all the stakeholders involved in the Historic Preservation Committee and the Museum Committee through this whole process. But I think that's what we're looking for, is, is this RFP for this? Or is it, no, we want to go straight to
Right.
Construction documents and then, um, but that, that would be our kind of first step, would be to see...
I mean, I'd love to know the actual cost. I just don't know where we're gonna get the hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't.
And I, we would like to explore what, what else could it be? You know, Economic Development Committee, I think there is some desire to bring some economic, income to the city that doesn't exist currently on this block. It's all government-owned. So is there any... So is there any economic, uh, development that could occur in that building that would help the city as well? So, and that's what we're looking for.
Cole, I appreciate it. And I just want to explain to everyone here and whoever might be listening, the process. So really we're lucky here in Caseville, we've got a great staff. Now, they have, over the years with different administrations, um, there have been discussions on council saying, what should we do with this building? And it, you know, nobody really, I think, wants to be the one to tear it down, but at the same time, nobody has actually stepped up to, to say, we want to save this. And the reason being is, is like Mike, is everyone's really talked about, it's, it's cost, you know? So if it ends up being a $5 million project, is the city going to commit $5 million of your taxpayer money to repair and replace this building? Now, I understand for the people here in the room, it's very important, you know, for me, for nostalgic purposes, my kids grew up there, I, I love the building too. We also have some other needs. And so that's been kind of the, the hard thing, the hard decision to make is do we commit that no matter what the cost, we'll save this building? Or do we want to spend the money to get the actual engineering, construction costs, knowing that, yeah, we, we spent $120,000, we get a bid from a contractor, they said, they say it'll take two years to finish. And then we still haven't made a decision because the museum committee hasn't raised the money and a private company doesn't want to step up and inhabit, inhibit, inhabit the building. So then we say, okay, well, are we still going to pay that? Because now that we have an actual bid, we know it'll cost maybe $3 million to fix it, we kick it down the road a little bit, it's going to cost more than that next time and we have to go through the process again. So I think as council, the best thing that we can do is we can, we can say, okay, what are we willing to do? Are we willing to commit that we want to go through this process of getting an RFP? And we're willing to either A, um, just wait for bids to come back and make a decision based on that. If we get zero response, nobody is willing to step up and put a commercial use in this building, does that mean that we don't save it? We need to make that decision. If it means that we're still going to pursue it and we're going to say, okay, fine, that's not going to work, we're going to go back to the drawing board, we're going to find the money internally, then we have to commit to that. So I think that that's the conversation, but it's hard because I know you're saying, well, how much does it cost? And we don't know that until we put some money into it.
And maybe it, it needs to go to a general obligation bond vote. And that would literally be the taxpayers would vote on it and if it was over 50%, the taxpayers are saying if it's a general obligation, that we are willing to pay, to raise our taxes to pay for the renovation of that building. So that would go to a vote of the people. Um, that, you know, I, I, I hope we can get an RFP.
I hope we get some response.
And get some response, but after that, to me, it would kind of have to go probably to the general obligate, general public. And that would go through a general obligation vote in November.
Okay, well, and it couldn't happen this year, there are some rules required.
Yeah.
But, but yes, I see your point. Yes, go ahead.
One thing, um, so just, so that, you know, because I, I do this every day, um, and I can kind of talk about this process. So if you do decide to, you know, pay the 120,000, whatever that cost is to get the design and engineering done on the building, one thing that we always suggest as architects is bring your contractor on board early, you know, have them involved in the design process because what they do during that process is they provide costing, they provide constructability ideas and they really look at the project. So if we're, you know, at the end of schematic design, which is the first phase of design, if we're over budget, you know, the budget that you've set, then we can cater the, the, you know, the, the remaining parts of this design process to your budget. And that's really what, you know, the, the contractor can, can help us with as, as we go through that process. So it's, it seems like it, you know, we don't know what it's going to cost, but we can really cater that cost to what your budget is. So, just as you, as you think about that, just keep that in mind.
Will you stay up here? Just, are you going to ask him a question or is your comment?
I'm just going to make a comment, so go ahead.
Okay, uh, just let me clarify, when you're talking about the 125,000 or the 6%, what we were talking about getting the plans, if, for example, like Mayor Tran has, uh, mentioned a restaurant, were to come in and maybe a section of it were to be a museum, you're saying it would be beneficial to have that information prior to going out to the 125, I mean, spending that 125 and involving the contract because you'd have to be talking about kitchens and ducks and different things like that?
So one, one way to approach this is to say, look, we're going to, we're going to build this out as a corn shell, meaning that, you know, whatever tenant decides to come into the building.
They can put their own improvements in.
They would, they would basically front the cost for that tenant improvement.
Okay.
So you would, you know, you, you as a city may, you know, do the cost to upgrade the building seismically, to put on a new roof, to install the restrooms, you know, to do the mechanical systems, but the remaining, you know, work that needs to be done for a tenant to occupy that space would be done by the tenant. So, so that would actually drive the cost of design down because we wouldn't be going through that process of designing all the interior spaces, so.
Okay, so design it, build it out as a shell, basically, that could be built with tenant improvements. Okay, customized. All right, um, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and.
Mike, there's no, on this, there's no vote on the tuition. If that goes to a vote, what happens if it's turned down?
I think things are going good though right now, Lynn. I think we're, we're on the good track right now.
Well, I, I think.
Thank you, he was just mentioning that as an option.
Yeah, I've just mentioned as an option, there, there are different bonds, there are general obligation bonds and there are municipal building bonds. It just depends on how you go through that.
I, I think that, I, I really appreciate this discussion. This is what a work session is about and I'm glad that you guys are all here to participate and to listen. So really, I guess for us, as we're having this conversation, we just need to decide, are we willing to, um, put this out for bid of some sort and spend 125,000-ish dollars potentially to, to do that, to get some drawings, um, created?
Well, Nate wanted to say.
Oh, oh, Nate, did you have a comment? Okay.
Yeah.
And we don't have to decide today, it's a work session, but we need to talk about it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate all the comments put forth and, and I agree with my fellow council members, I, I want to move forward, want to move the ball forward. And, um, I am all about preserving our culture in our community, but I'm also about strategic planning. I, I feel like, um, our city could do a better job with planning, uh, in certain areas, getting the right businesses in, more restaurants and things like that, more retail, retail that fits with our community and our culture here. I agree with, um, Councilmember Blackham and the mayor that, you know, cost is a real concern and the way I look at it is, I'm not willing to commit today to spend whatever it takes to save it. However, I want to, uh, find a creative way to save it. And I think it would be best to put it out to bid and to, it makes sense to me that the city would, um, cover costs of the shell. And then hopefully we get some bids in and some companies that would want to come in. I was really concerned when I saw the, um, architectural layout of the inside of the building, um, not because of what you did, it's just, what is it going to be used for? That's the, the question that's never really answered. And my biggest concern too is, yes, I want a, a space where we have, uh, we highlight Caseville's history, we have a museum, but one issue that I see across communities, um, throughout the Wasatch Front is they'll put so much money in these buildings to create a museum that nobody goes inside. And eventually generations in the future will let's tear it down. And so I want to have a plan moving forward. I love the idea of having a portion of it, uh, a museum. I love the idea of having maybe an art space, using ramp money to have an active art space, not just art that sits on the wall, but where we bring in the community and we do a yearly, uh, contest or whatnot. And I love the idea of getting a, a restaurant across the street from the movie theater. I just think we have to really think as a council, um, ahead of long-term, 30 years from now, I want to look for a way to save the building, but the cost is very concerning to me, so.
That, that's, appreciate that comment. And I will, I need to give a shout out to Mike. I think some of you might be thinking he's just, tear it down, he's not. He's the one that came up with this idea of, let's see if we can get a private company to do a public-private partnership and, and help us pay for it. And I think that was a fantastic idea and that's an idea moving forward because, you know, I think that it sounds like at least, I don't want to speak for you guys, you're here to speak for yourself, but it sounds like the consensus seems to be that we do, we would like to save it, we would like to repurpose it. So that being said, um, where would we need to go from here as far as, we need to give staff direction.
I think the RFP has to come first. I, I would really like to see if we could get somebody on board who's really interested in it. Because to me, if I'm a, a business that a lot of my people live in Davis County and have to drive to Salt Lake and I have the opportunity to get my business on Main Street in Caseville or a restaurant, I love your idea of a restaurant, I want to know if that person's out there. Because if we can get them involved early on with this RFP, then I think we would be more committed to spend money.
I have a question to that too. So it, it sounds like there would be certain commitments from the city too.
Yes.
Like building the shell, like, so if we put out an RFP, that would have to be a part of it. So we would have to make a decision.
Maybe, maybe not, we don't know.
Here's the difference, and that was where I was getting a little confused on some discuss, so when you talk about a bid versus an RFP, so an RFP is a request for bid, so you're bidding on something to build actual construction.
We're talking about proposal.
It's almost like an RFI.
Yeah, we want a proposal from them.
RFP is kind of an open-ended, it's, it's you throw it out there and say, okay, here is the shell of the building, what do other people, private sector, what would you envision using this building for? So when you're talking bid versus proposal, just keep in mind that a bid in our world is, we've got these plans, we're going to bid, or we're actually committed, we're going to go to an RFP for construction, engineering drawings, that's.
I'm looking for an RFP from somebody who's interested in participating in the remodel and renovation of a city building for a certain amount a month that they will pay based on.
And an RFP is costing the city no dollars.
Cole, Cole, I'm, I'm used to almost at this stage, it almost, what we would call with government contract would be an RFI. It's almost a request for interest. So here's what we want to do, you know, but RFP, I think proposals, I want, I'm looking for ideas of people coming in, what are you willing to do? What's in the realm of the possible?
Yeah, yes. That, that's where we are as far as, and then the next step after you get those proposals back would be, okay, now we're committed, let's go out with an RFP for, um, construction engineering, engineering services. And then once you get that done, then it's, we're going to go to bid for the actual construction, remodel, renovation, whenever you want to term that. So it's a process to go in and getting this step with FFKR was critical.
Right, to get us here.
To get us to this point. I think without their assessment, um, I think we'd still be walking.
We'd be languishing, yeah.
So I give a lot of credit to Steve and his, uh, consultant engineers that came through, you know, we cut holes in the building for them to get down and look at these issues to see why the floor was sinking and, and stuff like that, which has helped them identify the fixes. And so, um, this has been instrumental in getting us to this point and now, like Councilmember Oaks, we just need to keep moving in a forward path.
Well, and just to kind of illustrate what this looks like, an RFI or RFP, whatever, whichever term you want to use to, to get information about who would maybe be interested in participating in this building with us, um, what, it's a 60-day, so we put a proposal together or a request and, and issue it, they'd have 60 days to respond, we have 30 days to review the responses. So that looks like a 90-day process? Okay, right. So then the process beyond that, the next step would then be to evaluate what comes in and, and, and hopefully we have some great options to look at, right?
Yeah, I would envision if you get to the RFI, RFP, RFI or RFP process and then we're, then we know more, okay, this is, we've got someone on board and then we can begin what grants are out there to help us fund some of this stuff or what other options, funding mechanisms, what's the private sector willing to come to the table with, uh, which then helps the city identify, okay, here's our portion, here's that portion.
Okay.
So that would come back to the city council at that point to.
To have another work session and discussion, okay. Thanks, Cole, you had a comment.
I'd be back on Cole here. Basically what you're saying, Cole, is the challenge is if we go to the RFP, just making sure that we advertise it in a way that everyone can see it. Because I think government contractors are really good at scouring, you know, your bid proposal sites for those things.
Okay.
But your local restaurant, Orlando's or whatever it might be, has absolutely no idea that there's an RFP out there to save the building. So how do we as a city?
Which system do we use to put our, um, requests out there? Do we use BidSync?
So yes, we use BidSync, of course, our website.
Okay.
It's also something that we could email out through our community development, business licensing.
So, so we can get copies to people?
I know Linda's made contact with some developer, some developers that.
Well, I think there's a lot of commercial real estate people who deal in lease, lease contracts that know people and can get it to them.
So to your point, Rob, we can get that out, yeah. Because I agree, sometimes people don't know if they're just a mom and pop kind of shop place or boutique kind of place. Okay, um, John, you had a comment?
Yeah, just making, I love having an audience, so.
He loves the microphones.
The microphone's here and there's an audience, I know you all love me, I'm handsome.
You gonna sing?
Yeah, sing, I'll sing in a minute. Um, so, I mean, just my thoughts on this, because I've thought a lot about it. I think that, um, when Mike, you know, Mike and I were on the opposite ends of this originally with this building and, you know, our marriage has blossomed. And I, I think that his, his idea with this was so phenomenal because I think for the longest time we have said, like, you, we need to, we can't just turn this entire building into a museum, but we really want to save the building. And so I think having some mixed use is just brilliant because also it brings people in to look at it, you know? If they're coming in, whether it's maybe somebody requests and says they want to put in their law offices or something like that, whatever it is, it's going to bring people into the building. I think the city still has some obligation to, to just preserve the building, uh, just because it is what it is, right? And so I feel like there's three different areas that are going to come together with this building. I think having another business use that provides some money, I feel like city's obligation just as a city to preserve and then also fundraising to provide for the, uh, museum and those types of things. And I think between those three, we can do it. I'm going to open Pandora's box a little bit just because I want to tease this audience and see kind of what your thoughts are. A, a few years ago, um, there was, uh, the police, we needed to hire more police officers. And, uh, one of the things we did was we accessed funds that, uh, come from, uh, that are generated from the power department. And this sort of caused a riffle within the community and activated what some of us were familiar with the Prop, Prop 5, which passed and restricted the power department from being able to use any of the power funds for anything other than power-related issues. Uh, I sometimes have thought that that was a little extreme in the sense that we have a power department that, that, you know, generates funds. And if it were to be redistributed at the end of the year to all of the residents, would maybe come to a check for $20 or something like that, but accumulated equals sometimes a million or a million and a half. Um, I've, I've thought often, what if we had some serious restrictions on what that money could be used for? For example, uh, only things that are, uh, one-time spends that are providing benefit to the residents, uh, maybe donation to a park. And it was out in the open, there were plenty of open, open meetings, where did Nick go? There were open meetings on, on, uh, where those funds would be allocated. And, and I thought, gosh, the library would be a great place to start this conversation. Um, you know, we don't, we talked about, Mike talked about the fact that we were a million dollars short on our budget this year, um, but there's lots of funds in the, in the power fund. We can't use that to cover any of, any of that shortage, which I, I get, and I don't think we should use it to pay for things like hiring, hiring, uh, employees because those are ongoing costs. But if you were to say, hey, what if we used 500 grand or 750 grand out of that power fund to save the library? I think, I, I would be totally in favor of that. So again, there's a work item and totally kind of unrelated, but I'd like to, maybe I'm going to get nasty emails or maybe I'm going to get some pro emails, but I'd like to start that conversation of maybe modifying that proposition to include some things that we can spend on. I'm seeing some head nods, I'm not seeing any shakes.
Can I make one point too with that? If we do that and we're able to do that, you got to understand, if we sent this out to a private investor, they're going to pay it back. It's not going to just go away through their lease agreement or whatever, they will pay that money back to the city.
Yeah, but zero interest for us.
Zero interest, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I love that idea. I feel like we have so much money. I feel like we have so much money in, in power, and we have to have a very large rainy day fund in there, we have to have, the majority of it has to go specifically to power. But I know Bountiful City uses money from their Power Department that they generate, and oftentimes, if I understand correctly, Smith's, that, some of that money for that development was used from Power, and that generates what, 300-plus thousand a year for the city? And so, we have to get smart and strategic as a city, but we have to have strong checks and balances, and I'm confident in this council that we can make that happen and be completely transparent, but make these decisions that we could easily put money to save the library. And I would support that so quickly, so.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate that.
Basically, that's the action, right? Send it to a RFP.
So that's the direction for staff?
RFI/RFP, whatever you want to call it.
RFI/RFP, yeah, put it up.
So, as a work item, so does this need to come back as an action item, and then give that direction, or how does it?
Good question. I don't know.
No, I, unless Mr. Stevens wants more direction, I think the council's been clear, we'll put it out for an RFP, RFI, and then we'll report back to the council, probably at a work session again, about what we've discovered.
Okay, and we'll let you know when this happens, so that we can get you copies of this.
Can, can I make one, you know?
Absolutely.
I, I want to make sure we, as a government, are not being prescriptive of what's gonna go in there.
Yes.
So, I mean, you know, we, we've said a few things, but I think binary, every time the government gets involved too much, it gets screwed up. So, just.
From, from a, you know, staff perspective, completely open, I have no preconceived anything.
Well, that's why I think the RFP and the RFI is so.
That's why I really am interested to go out with this, to see actually what is out, what are.
We're not private business owners here. That's why we think that they can tell us what could work.
So I have, I have no preconceived anything.
If I were a bond, a bond, what do they call the guys that do bonds?
Bondsman?
Bondsman, I mean, you're right by the police station.
Oh, my gosh.
A bail bondsman, that's what it is, a bail bondsman.
So you won't get a cannabis shop, probably.
Okay.
I think the Creamery should move over there, though, and expand.
Yeah.
I would love the Bun Basket that used to be in Furt Heights to move over there. They had great food, and it would be great, so.
Spread word, RFP.
Something that complements our city, and that would be a great fit, would be awesome. Anyway, so appreciate that, guys. Do we feel good about this work session? Okay. All right. Councilmember reports, does anyone have anything to report?
Yeah, I actually, I actually do, and, so I've, I've been working with Loretta, Cole, our CERT manager. There's an issue with, with repeaters for CERT, you know, that she's been working with Chief Erickson, and it's just one of those funding things, and there've been time, and they came up on the, with the Fourth of July, with the tragedy that happened there, that they were not able to communicate with other members because of a lack of the radio and the repeater. And so I think it's one of those things that's important, you know, as, as in everything, it's more money, but I want to bring it up, because if we have a CERT program, and we want to have one that's viable, it's gonna be one of those, you know, items, anyways.
So, that's handheld radios?
I think it's the, it's the repeater that'll be at the fire station, that allows the base station to be able to send the signal, so they're able to talk to people that are, say, west of I-15, or.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Perry, that's good to keep in mind. Anyone else have a council report? No? Okay, Shane, I know you're online, do you have anything to report as city manager? Nope? Okay, next, anything? Okay.